Good evening. Please stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees' meeting for the School Towne of Speedway for May 9th, 2023. We're working from an 11-item agenda tonight, and the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the April 11th, 2023, meeting.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from our prior meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Minutes are signed.
Great. Thank you. Item number two is to review ISBA policies, participation at public school board meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. On September 14th, 2021, the Board approved our participation by public at school board meetings. Again, that was September 14th of 2021, and at this time, I would just like to review that policy with the understanding, knowing that each year, things change, and the ISBA is going to send new guidance for what we need to, at that time, change and adjust. So this is our working copy right now. The Board of the School Towne of Speedway welcomes public attendance at its monthly board meetings. Visitors will be expected to sign in before being seated in the audience. Signing in will include providing visitor's name and home address. And there's a few steps after that. Visitors who speak will only be permitted to speak on Agenda Action items that are on the Board agenda. A visitor who wishes to address the Board about any Agenda item may do so at the time of the Board's discussion of that item. A visitor who wishes to raise a new issue with the Board must contact the Superintendent's office to be added to the Agenda prior to the time of the public posting of the Agenda. Number two, the visitor must state the visitor's name and home address. Number three, the visitor may speak up to two minutes. Number four, time will be kept by the Board or designated. Number five, the total time for comment for the public during the recognition of visitor's portion of the Agenda is no more than 30 minutes. However, any Board member at his or her discretion may make a motion to extend the time in 10-minute increments. Number six, Board members may, but are not expected to respond to or ask questions of the visitor who has addressed the Board. And finally, number seven, any visitor who engages in really disruptive, disruptive, or similar behavior during public comment will not be permitted to continue speaking. So again, this was passed in 2021, September 14th. We'll continue to get this guidance from the ISBA and our legal counsel.
Great. Thank you. We do have a visitor who would like to speak on this Agenda item. Could Mr. Adam Parsons please step forward? And Adam, if you don't mind, just please state your name and your address.
Sure. My name is Adam Parsons. I live at 6204 Maron Drive.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. Do we have a timer?
Working on it. Yep.
You're up, sir. Okay, great. So the main thing that I wanted to address about this particular policy was its location on your website. I had a Dickens of a time trying to find it. The school board is under School Board on the Speedway Town Schools. This policy was under About, Policies and Procedures, and then Participation by Public. It is not clear. I did several Google searches, found the 2019 ISBA opinion. I found Policy 06169.1, and then I found this one. So communication has not been clear about how the public can participate in these meetings. It would be great if we could get this document under the School Board category on the website. Also, I had a quick question. Again, with this policy, I noticed that on the printout, it was from Board Docs, and I had a conversation with Dr. Trebley about Board Docs. I don't think Board Docs, honestly, is required right at the moment. PDFs and a link would do great. That's what works for the Agenda. And so if this document could be, or any of the other documents could be PDFed, which I know they can, and can be linked, which I also know that they can, then you can provide the public the actual documents that are required for our information to intelligently communicate with the Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else to share on item number two? Thank you. Item number three, the most fun item on our agenda tonight, is recognition of Indiana Math Bowl Elementary Area results.
Mr. Schnauz, please approach, and I will hand the mic over to you.
Got a bunch of wards here that I'm trying to organize. Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to highlight the Newbie Math Bowl team. Again, the Indiana Association of School Principals leads several statewide programs and other competitions that help engage our students and give them an opportunity to compete at a statewide level. Two academic competitions offered that all four Speedway Elementary Schools compete in are Spell Bowl, which takes place in the fall, and then Math Bowl that took place last month. The four Speedway Elementary Schools placed, are placed into what they call the Green Class, one of five classes, which I compare to the high school athletic classes. The Green Class includes all schools that house 4th through 6th grade with enrollment in those grade levels, up to 186 students. To kind of give you comparison, we have approximately 90 students, so we're about half of what the max would be. Most schools select students who are interested in competing in December or January and begin practicing one to two times per week. This year, I believe we had 15 team members. At Newbie, Mr. Shoulders leads his team through practice from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. twice a week, and they are also given additional at-home assignments, which I believe is your favorite part, correct? Then, they do meet every day in the week leading up to the competition. These practices are focused on a pre-identified component of math. So for example, this year, the focus for the competition was data analysis, statistics, and probability. And last year was geometry and measurement. Then, the competition consists of four rounds of eight questions. Each team sends up three students per round, so a minimum of 12 students have to compete, with an additional one to two optional substitutes that join halfway through each round. Students are given between 30 and 60 seconds to answer each question, so time crunch there, and they have to work together. At the conclusion of those 32 questions, or four rounds, scores are calculated and tiebreakers are assessed to determine the winners. The four Speedway Elementary Schools competed at the junior high last month. On that same night, all other Speedway, or all other elementary schools participating in the Math Bowl were also competing at their local sites. Competing against approximately 110 other elementary schools in the Green Class, we had two Speedway schools finish in the top 20 within the state this year, and that follows up top three, three top-five finisher in schools last year. This year, as well as last year, Newbie was runner-up. With that being said, I'd love to take the opportunity to celebrate the hard work put in by our coach, Mr. Michael Shoulders, and all of our mathletes that are both sitting here, as well as those unable to attend. So, Mr. Shoulders, would you please come up and introduce your mathletes? Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm not as wordy as Mr. Schnauz is, but I'd like to introduce our mathletes out here. We've got Braylee Dinwiddie, Della Young, Alex Dinwiddie, Leo Pryor, Sophie, Jacob, Benjamin, Biz, Madhu, and Dylan. So, these are...
Two-thirds of our team?
Gotta make it about math.
Yes.
Thank you for this opportunity to highlight all of the Speedway Math Bowl teams, but particularly Newbie Elementary Math Bowl team. Any questions for us?
I'd just say congratulations. This is fantastic. I'm so proud of all of you. I hope that this was a great experience, and I know that the math teachers at the junior high and high school are getting excited, ready to see yous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shoulders.
Well, as much and as exciting as this is, you guys probably have homework and things to do, so at this time, I will go ahead and exclude you, or not exclude you, but you're welcome to leave, and you're dismissed, so you will hopefully have school tomorrow. Thank you, parents, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is to present the Athletic Handbook for 2023-2024 school year.
Each year at this time, we present the Athletic Handbook for its review and recommendations for revision. A copy of the Athletic Handbook is included in your packet, along with executive summary of the changes. Changes in your, in the executive summary are in red. Changes being proposed this year are very minimal, and they're changes that were a result of the IHSA Board of Directors that passed legislation on May 2nd, so just recently, that affects practices before competition or returning to competition after extended absences. To just run through those, an athlete must complete eight separate days of organized practices before competing. This used, this was an IHSA bylaw change from 10. It used to be that you'd have to have 10 practices before you compete. Second is, if an athlete misses eight to 14 consecutive days of activity, the athlete must complete two days of practice prior to participation in competition, and this is a change by the IHSA from four days to two days. And last, if an athlete misses more than 14 consecutive days, the athlete must complete three days of practice prior to competing. And again, this is an IHSA bylaw change from six to three. My recommendation is that you would approve the Athletic Handbook as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Disney. We do have somebody who signed up to speak on this topic, Adam Parsons.
Thank you. Again, Adam Parsons, 6204 Maron. So again, to, not to reiterate, but to restate, there was no Board Packet available, there was no executive summary for the public to look at, there was no Board Packet with the changes for us to review ourselves and give you input. There was nothing on the website that stated what changes were to be made. Now, it sounds like they were minimal, they were required by the state, thankfully enough this year, but there are some changes that may have outsized impact on some families, and they might want to have their voice heard. I think it is a disservice to the public, the patrons, and the parents of Speedway Schools to not have these documents online in the public purview. It was, it's a disservice to myself. I have a sixth grader that, right now, and I have a three-year-old coming into Wheeler in two years. I think this is an large area of improvement for the Board operations, for Speedway Schools' operations, to have these documents online, to be as transparent and clear as possible with the parents, instead of looking at documents and looking at executive summaries, which we have no access to. The document I have is the 2223. That's all that I could find. That's all that's available to me. I, and if, if there's the 2324 with changes, please let me know. I know that you're allowed to respond, but maybe not required, and so you don't have to respond to that. But, Dr. Trebley, you have my phone number, so if the 2324 is available with the executive summary, please let me know, and let me know that I'm wrong. But as far as I can see, this is not available, and so parents are being left in the dark. Thank you.
Any other comments on this? Okay. Thank you. Item number five is continued...
A motion. We need a vote on it.
Oh, to present.
Yes. Mr. President, I move that we approve the Athletic Hand... No, are we approving it tonight? Sure why not?
Yeah.
Okay. It says present. Are we, I move that we approve the Athletic Handbook for the 2324 school year.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any other items? All those in favor of approving the 2023-2024 Athletic Handbook, please raise your hand. Those opposed? The Handbook is approved. Item number five is to approve our continued participation in the Advanced Placement Teacher Investment Program associated with the University of Notre Dame.
Thank you, Mr. President. The recommendation is to continue, continue our affiliation with our AP Teacher Incentive Program with the University of Notre Dame. Speedway High School was a part of the first cohort of the AP TIP Indiana program back in 2012. Participation in this program was originally scheduled for a three-year cycle. Because of the success in expanding the number of students enrolled and achieving qualifying scores, AP Math, Science, English exams, we continued our affiliation with the AP TIP Indiana as an affiliate school. We have been an affiliate school for seven-plus years, and our affiliation also provides our teachers exclusive access to advanced placement, best practices, training, and professional development. Our students' continued success and the consistent expansion of our AP program is the best evidence of its values. So my recommendation is to continue our participation with the AP Teacher Investment Program associated with the University of Notre Dame.
Thank you.
I'll move that we continue participation with the AP TIP program with Notre Dame.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the program?
It's a great program, so I'm very excited to continue participation.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving continued participation in the AP TIP-in program, please raise your hand. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Item number six is to approve the Student Handbook, Section V.
At last month's Board meeting, we approved most of the Handbook, except for Section V under appropriate dress. There was some suggestions on some wording, and in your packet, there is a copy of the previous Handbook edition, the 2223 edition, and then there's a copy of the, the recommendations. The phrase in there, "Head coverings." During the school day, students will not be permitted to wear bandanas, hoodies, pulled-up head coverings unless, unless for religious reasons, or hats of any kind in the building. The rest of that was approved at last month's Board meeting. My recommendation was, is to approve as presented.
Mr. President, I move that we approve these two...
Oh, I'm sorry. One moment. We do have somebody who was asked to speak on this item. Adam Parsons? Sorry?
Thank you. Again, Adam Parsons, 6204 Maron. Wait until the timer starts this time. Okay. All right. Dr. Trebley, again, we've had this conversation, so you know what I'm going to say. There are a few things, two or three particulars on this one. Again, the proposals were nowhere to be found. We did not know this was coming until last month, maybe a phone call prior to last month's meeting. We had no idea that there was going to be a change. So again, the parents were underserved by Speedway Schools and you, the Board. I really want to drive that home, because it is a very important opportunity to do better. We can do better, and the parents expect better. Okay. Pertaining to the hats of any kind outside of religious reasons, I have a big problem with this. Baseball caps will be banned completely. A warm hat to keep your head warm will be banned completely. And let's not even get into pop culture. How many of here, how many people went to high school in the '70s, '80s, '90s? Okay. You're not raising your hand, because you're not replying. That's fine. That's fine. Imagine 1986, with the impact of Debbie Gibson, none of the girls could wear the hat. Imagine the impact of LL Cool J on Kangols, none of those would be allowed. Imagine the impact of Axl Rose and bandanas, none of those would be allowed. High school especially, and the younger years, are a time for self-expression, self-discovery. There's more to high school than grades. There's more to school than grades. Now, I understand, Dr. Trebley, you had talked about gang-related activity. That is a very, very narrow sliver of headgear, of hats, or anything. There are, there are reasons, there are fashion reasons to wear headgear inside. There are also no ethnic reasons to wear headgear in size, inside.
Mr. Parsons, I'm sorry, you're at your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item number six?
I will now make my motion to approve the Student Handbook, Section V.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed? That passes 5-0. Item number seven is Report Regarding Textbook Supply Fees for 2023-2024 School Year.
This year was the textbook adoption year for science, and in your packet, there is a listing of previous year's textbook fees and this year's textbook fees, and the last thing we want to do is increase fees, but as you've known, the price of everything went up. So the textbook fees that are listed there for grades one through six include the adoption of a new science textbook. Grade seven and eight and nine through 12 will also be adopting textbooks, but those textbooks, that price will vary based on classes that students take. I will tell you that, that as of Friday, House Bill 1001 came out, and House Bill 1001 talks about charging of curriculum materials and possibly not charging of curriculum materials. There's not enough guidance on that yet. If that comes out, then that's a great thing for our parents, but we're waiting on more guidance in how that will work. So my recommendation would be approve the elementary-level textbook and supply fees for 23 and 24, with the caveat that 1001 may affect that.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the textbook fees for 2324 with the caveat that that may change with the House bill, or I guess with, wherever that goes.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or any other information on this? I think we probably do need to clarify, we don't actually make any money on these books. This is not a profit-driven thing.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the textbook supply fee for 2023-2024 school year. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Item number eight is to acknowledge grants received, and we'd like to acknowledge that we received $554,702.94 in grants. Item number nine is our personnel report.
We have 10 items on the Personnel Report for this month. We have five resignations. Taylor Jones has resigned position of elementary teacher. Alsa Nash has resigned her position as Girls' varsity assistant basketball coach. Jeanne Sire has resigned her position as cafeteria worker at Speedway High School. Trevor Long has resigned his position as athletic director at the junior high school, and Sherri Schilling has resigned her position as cafeteria worker at Speedway Junior High School. Recommendations for employment. Mike Hensley is being recommended as the head custodian for Speedway Schools. Madison Evans is being recommended as a speech-language pathologist. Ellie Harrington as an elementary teacher. Tanya Williams as a cafeteria worker, and Dan Maple as the athletic director of Speedway High School. My recommendation is that you approve the Personnel Report as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the Personnel Report? Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Item number 10 is recognition of visitors and/or their business. Yes, Dr. Trebley?
Ladies and gentlemen, last Tuesday, the Speedway Schools voted yes for another eight years for our school referendum. That is a third time. It's a repeat, and it's a renewal of the 2016 referendum. In 2010, the vote was at 87% yes, and 2016, 91%. And this year, we had our own different opposition, even with people at the table or in the room, but I'm so proud of this community, the parents, the PAC Committee, of getting a 79.2%, although that seems a little lower than the others. I get the numbers. But I'm going to tell you, with property taxes and all the other things that are going on in the world, that is a phenomenal number for our school corporation. We believe in small classrooms with great teachers in our neighborhood schools. We have, the school's been around since 1928, established 1928. 1926, the town was founded, 1928, the school. So this place has been through so much, and there's so much tradition and so much pride inside of this community. And I just, I know there's people in the audience right now that participated either on the PAC or through the treasure hunt, and I, I gotta tell people that when I asked for people to join this, I sent out about 30 emails, and I just didn't know if two people would show up, and we had about 45. I think people brought friends to this thing. And throughout the last month or two, when we were, I guess you would call it campaigning, I met some great people and great friends forever in this community, and I love living in this community and working next to all of you guys at this table, and with our teachers and the teachers and the parents. So we want to continue to make this place proud, and I just want to say thank you to the Committee. I want to say thank you to the parents and the community for voting yes for our schools. We got a special thing going here, and we want to keep it going. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have a... We do have a visitor who wanted to speak on item number 10. Mary Haste, would you please join us? And Mary, if you don't mind, just stating your name and address, please.
Absolutely. Mary Haste, 6035 Maron Drive. And I just wanted to say that I did speak with Mr. Bickel earlier, and he had mentioned, like, last month, maybe, that you were considering a platform to use. And I'm just, as a parent, I don't think spending that kind of money for Speedway is necessary. I do feel like we can just link in those documents. I don't know if I can hand you something to pass, but I have printed, like, what we have and then surrounding districts. I couldn't email it in to you guys, so I would suggest that maybe if the Board would consider having an email address, that way that it goes directly to the President. Can I hand this?
Yeah, of course.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other business? Great. Item number 11 is for us to adjourn and approve claims. So thank you very much.